All right, everyone. Welcome to our Finance Committee meeting. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, there's one item down. All right. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the January 6th meeting?
So moved.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. All right. I'm guessing we're not going to have any public comment tonight. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all the citizens who speak to the committee during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the committee come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the audience of citizens' logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the committee chair may ask an individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. Is there anybody wishing to speak at this time? Clearly not. All right. Moving on. We're going to rearrange our agenda this evening a little bit and start with our informational items. And Mr. Schrocki, if you want to go ahead and tell us what we're doing first.
Sure. I'd like to cover the 2019 tax liens first. The tax liens are basically unpaid real estate taxes through the end of December. So we issue our bills in July of each year, and any bill that is unpaid by the end of that calendar year, we turn over to the Tax Claim Bureau of Montgomery County. So this year was kind of amazing that we were within $491 from the previous year, which is pretty amazing, pretty much right on target from where we were last year in terms of the properties that were turned over. And I do have a spreadsheet there just showing some of the history. So we actually had 19 fewer properties, but we had a couple larger properties this year that didn't pay the taxes. So the net effect was just a reduction in the number of properties that were leaned by $500. 19 fewer properties and 491 fewer dollars. So it's kind of interesting. We did have a couple larger commercial properties, I think, that are in bankruptcy proceedings. That was the reason why we didn't have a couple of those paid. But overall, pretty good year in terms of real estate tax collection. That's the message here. Any questions on tax liens? Tax liens. A lot of times, that's kind of a leading economic indicator for us, too. If we start to see an increase in the number of properties that are turned over for collection, obviously, that's a sign that something is amiss in the economy. Okay, moving on. Next item, the governor's budget address will occur tomorrow. This is the 2021 budget address by Governor Wolf. The proceedings commence at 11:30 tomorrow morning. You can watch that live on PCN TV. I put the link in Board Docs. And it'll be interesting. We pay close attention to this because these are the governor's initiatives for the upcoming year. We are most concerned, of course, with the basic ed funding and special ed funding number for next year. We're not guaranteed the number the governor proposes, but it's always a good indication of what might be forthcoming for the upcoming fiscal year. So we'll be recapping the address tomorrow afternoon. I'll send out information in terms of what that means in terms of additional subsidy for North Penn's budget for next year.
And regarding that, there is another opportunity the governor does have to recommend to the legislature regarding funding, and that has to do with cyber education funding and the special education funding of charter schools. So we're hopeful the governor does address those two issues. There's an opportunity for substantial savings if costs that districts are charged, that are paid to the cyber schools, to the charter schools, are brought more closer in line to actual costs. So we are hopeful. There are a group of superintendents. I as North Penn Superintendent did represent the district in that group. It's the Learn Group. We had a press conference last week, and we're really hopeful that the governor does address those two items in the upcoming budget address.
On January 23rd of this year, we received a nice little gift sent to the business office, and that gift was a notice that the IRS is coming to North Penn. The IRS will be auditing our 403B plans and 457 plans. We received a 20-page document for request for information. I've told many people that it's the equivalent of receiving about 100 right-to-know requests in one day. So we have all of a couple weeks to get ready for that audit. They're going to be onsite in mid-February already. So it'll be an onsite portion, and we'll be sending documents to the IRS in advance of that meeting. So very limited amount of time to turn around a tremendous amount of data requests that we've received.
When's the last time we've been chosen for this particular gift?
Never, as far as I know, for a 403B plan audit. I reached out to my colleagues in the state of Pennsylvania. I haven't been able to identify anyone in the state of Pennsylvania that's received the 403B audit. I reached out to my colleagues nationally. I received about five responses nationally. However, we did receive, this has been the word on the street, so to speak, for the last couple of years, that the IRS now is focusing on governmental entities with respect to the 403B plans. So if there's anything that's amiss, let's say, for example, an employee overwithholds the amount, let's say, in one particular year, the maximum was $20,000 for 403B. If the employee withheld $21,000 over withheld, it's not the employee's responsibility, it's the employer's responsibility. So there's a lot at stake here. Of course, if we're out of compliance, there could be fines levied by the IRS. But it's clear that, you know, the IRS is looking for larger organizations. They wouldn't typically audit a smaller school district like Sauterton, for example. There's much more at stake when you're dealing with one of the largest school districts in the state of Pennsylvania.
Is there the ability to?
Well, Kristen was successful. She spoke to the agent. I think you got it pushed back, what, a week? Something like that? I mean, it's ridiculous, quite honestly. We did explain that we have day jobs here, that we're not at the IRS's beck and call, but it is what it is. We do have a 403B plan administrator who's going to be helping us with some of the document requests. They've been very helpful so far. In fact, they have a department in charge of compliance. TSA Consulting is the name of the company, and that's basically where we remit all the employee deductions to. They assist us with things like our plan document and deduction limits and tax regulations and so forth. So they are going to be assisting us, but the lion's share of the work rests in the business office accumulating all the documents that are necessary for the audit and then meeting with the IRS in the latter part of February.
Two quick questions. Is this desk review or is it all onsite?
It's a combination of the two.
Okay.
Yeah, there will be an onsite piece. Probably a lot of that, you know, their onsite involvement might be one meeting, it might be more. We've heard from some of our colleagues, I can't remember what state, it might have been Texas or New York. I think the IRS showed up in one day in the office, and they never saw or heard from them again. That would be fine by me if that's the case. That means that we're pretty much in compliance with everything if they go away after the one day. But they do want a lot of documentation prior to the in-person meeting.
They're asking for seven years' worth?
They're actually focusing on the year 2017, calendar year 2017.
Interesting. Just be curious, then, along the way through your professional network, just very interested to find out what the outcomes of these audits are for such a targeted sample. Be interested to know what our federal government's actually saving the taxpayer through this process.
It's great for us, too, to be able to share with our colleagues the 20-page request for information, and I shared locally here with my colleagues in Montgomery County, but we'll do the same at the state level. So if anybody else is contacted by the IRS, they know what to expect.
And that's, just to be correct, that's just the 403B?
403B and the 457B plans, yeah, both plans.
Thank you.
The 403B, though, we only have a few people in the 457 plans, employee deductions, but the 403B is the big one.
That primarily through AXA?
That's one of our approved providers. That's one, but we have several.
Vanguard.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
When you reached out to the rest of the country, did they share with you the results of their audit?
Not any written results, but just verbally what some of the outcome was, what they might be looking for, for example. One, it's interesting, one of the individuals commented that, well, if they're contacting you, they know something's wrong already. So that's why they're selecting North Penn. That selection doesn't happen randomly. So we were a little alarmed by that, but we'll see. We'll see what, if we're able to provide all the documents. First is to make sure we have everything they're asking for. There's a lot of, especially when you go back several calendar years, there's a lot of piecemeal and patchwork of our electronic data that we have to put together for them.
Well, I guess you don't have to bother auditing Amazon, so why not the public schools, right?
Right.
All right.
Okay, next item, we have the Act One Special Ed Exception. As the board approved in January along with the preliminary budget, the board approved our application to the Pennsylvania Department of Education for the Act One Special Education Exception. I just wanted to let you know that we did file for that exception last Thursday. A copy of the exception report is attached in Board Docs, and the total amount was $1.784 million. So PD's approval, I use the term approval very loosely because it's guaranteed, pretty much, it's perfunctory. In fact, the data that we submit comes pre-populated. It's based on annual financial report information that we submitted for prior years. So it's basically, we need to establish that we properly advertised the special ed exception application, which we did, and the board authorized it. After that, it really is a truly perfunctory approval process. So the deadline for PD to respond to us is March the 4th, but the application will be approved. At that point in time, in subsequent budget meetings and hearings and so forth, the board can deliberate in terms of how much, if any, of the exceptions actually utilized for the 2021 fiscal year. Okay, moving on. Last item we have for information other than our presentations, actually is going to steal some of Nick's thunder. So Nick, can you stand up and just make sure everybody knows who you are? Nick Kranak is our Coordinator of Transportation, and I'm pleased to report that he is the recipient of the PASBO 2019 Award of Achievement for the Propane Bus Initiative. Congratulations, Nick. It's great news. It's awesome because as part of the award, we receive, the school district receives a $3,000 scholarship that we can grant to our graduating seniors. We were fortunate to receive it in 2018 for the tax rebate program, so we got it back-to-back years for North Penn. So great job with that, Nick. Nick will talk about that a little bit in his presentation. But the focus of the award, anyone in the state can submit for this award, and it's really based on significant contributions to school business management. It promotes and enhances the overall operation of the school entity. The submission must be innovative, and it needs to be able to be replicated by other school districts. So our submission met all the criteria and was reviewed by a committee, a PASBO Awards Committee, and subsequently approved by the entire PASBO Board of Directors. So Nick will be recognized at the annual conference in March in Pittsburgh and get a big check for $3,000, and then later, the school district will be able to divvy out $3,000 worth of scholarships. Last year, we gave out three separate $1,000 scholarships to students looking to pursue business, anything in the field of business. You might remember our previous student liaison to the Finance Committee, Billy Wormuth was one of the recipients. So JoJo, you're only a junior this year, right? So we'll win it again next year. That way, you might have an opportunity to tap into one of those scholarships, okay? But great news again, congratulations, Nick. So other than the two departmental budget presentations we have, that concludes the informational items for tonight.
All right. Well, then, we should move on to that. Which of the, should we just start right down the line here?
Yeah, if we could, if we could start with the 2021 Extended School Care Program Budget.
All right.
Marjorie Scott is going to give a presentation, give a little overview about the Extended Care Program, talk about a recommendation for tuition rates and camp rates for next year, and also give a budget overview. So, Marjorie, welcome.
Thank you. For those of you who are new, Steve said I'm going to give a little bit of an overview of the program. This is actually the 20th year of our Extended School Care Program operated by the district. We have before-school care, can you hear me? Sorry. Which starts at 7:00, and after-school care, which ends at 6:00. Breakfast is included in the morning along with activities, and homework time and snack is included in the afternoon along with activities. This year, we have 847 children enrolled currently, which is about 150 or so more than last year. Full-day kindergarten was a giant blessing to our program, and we have many, many more children. So summer camp, we offer two summer camps in the summer, and last year, we had about 164 children. During the school year, we offer two, three, four, and five-day programs, either flexible or fixed. And we have a number of in-service days where we offer a camp. We accept state and county subsidized funds, and we bill the private paying parents monthly September through May based on their service. All of our programs are licensed by the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services as childcare programs. And what that means is we have to follow certain staff-to-student ratios. We have to have 40 square feet per child in the physical space that we have. We have 28 full-time staff currently, and we have 48 part-time and substitute staff. There has to be a college-degreed person in each location in either education or human services. All staff must be 18 years of age, and I covered the 40 square feet. So I hope that gives you, especially the new people, I'm sorry, I know that's really the nickel tour of the program. So why I'm here tonight is we want to recommend program fees for next year so that we can begin our registration for summer camp and then for the Extended School Care Program. And we would like to increase the fees 2.6%, which would make camp, this year it was 271, we'd like to go up to 278. And then it's also 2.6% increase over last year's fees. Morning care right now for five mornings is 241, afternoon is 318, and those are monthly, and then both is the 425. And if I can jump ahead, those are the fees, just to give you an idea. We are doing quite well this year since our influx of extra children from particularly the kindergartners. We have quite a waiting list. However, with that blessing comes the challenge of continuing to staff adequately. The economy is great, which is a great thing in a lot of ways, as Steve said, not a lot of people not paying their taxes, but it also makes it very difficult to find staff. So as part of our budget recommendation, we're asking for the increase so that when we do our budget, we can offer a flat $1.50 increase to all of our staff. The substitutes make $13.29 an hour. The incoming assistants make $13.90. The other staff that are degreed actually make in the $20, $20 an hour range, but it is really difficult for us to get and replace staff, and we're hoping that will really go a long way toward helping retain our current staff and attract some new staff as we move forward with the program.
Do you have difficulty retaining?
This year is really difficult, and I think it's probably true of the other operations and departments in the school district. We get a full complement, and then someone else quits, and it's just, we have a pretty good retention record, but
Okay.
This year has just been a challenge, and I think there's a lot of opportunities out there for people right now, so.
Can we work through the waiting list? Is it possible that we'll come to a point where we could reach even if we don't have a waiting list?
The challenge with the waiting list is, as I talked about earlier, you need a certain ratio of staff to children. You also need 40 square feet per child. So like at Gwinnett Square, for example, we use the cafeteria and the gym and some of the pods outside the library as well as the library, and we have maxed out on the space that we have available to us there.
Is that the case in a lot of the other schools?
In the larger programs, that is the case. I would say Bridle Path is probably at capacity. Montgomery is for sure at capacity. The smaller schools, York, Oak Park, there's a little more room, but there's also not as much demand. Thank you.
And Marjorie, the lion's share of your staff work a split shift, correct?
Yes, our staff are split shifts, so the full-time people come in seven and they're till, here till about 11:00, 11:30, and then they come back three to six. The part-time people work seven to nine and 3:15 to six, or even 5:15 or 5:30. So it's a challenge to get staff to work that split shift.
To me, this sounds like another good reason why we need to get the high school and the middle high school, probably, to fill space, to be a space.
So I'm just curious, the people who work that split shift, do some people just do mornings and others just do afternoons, and some do both? Is that kind of the way?
Yes, for some people, it's their second job. We share some staff with food service. We try to share substitutes with food service as well because it works well for both of us.
I want to mention, too, that Marjorie's Extended Care Program is what we call an enterprise fund. We have three enterprise funds in the school district. We have Extended Care, we have School Nutrition Services, and we have Community Education. So the charge of each of those programs is to operate like a business. Tax dollars are not supporting this program. It's all supported by parent tuition, just like the School Nutrition Program isn't supported by tax dollars, it's supported by federal and state dollars and children paying for their meals. So Marjorie has done quite well and has a nice balance, has a nice fund balance, so the program is financially stable and can support the additional pay for the staff members. So we do support the recommendation because it's very, very challenging to obtain the staff members, especially when you consider the split shift. It's very similar to the challenge we have in transportation. Nick might talk about that later. When you ask someone to work two split shifts, two hours at a clip, or maybe three hours at a clip, you're really, your target market is pretty small, especially trying to have somebody with a college degree that's willing to work split shifts like that. When they have an opportunity to get a full-time job somewhere, that's when they leave.
I'm wondering, maybe in particular for the summer programs, does the program offer any kind of subsidy for families who can show a financial need?
So for the school year end for the summer, we accept subsidized funds from Montgomery County. So we have a contract with them, and if you qualify with the county, then you pay a small weekly fee to us, and they pay the difference.
And thank you for the stability of this program and the leadership. I remember this was one of the first presentations that really stood out when I was first a board director, and as I learn more each year, I'm really pleased to see this direction. With this budget recommendation, which I'm also pleased with this year as well, I'm just wondering about how many of the employees that we have reside within North Penn? Do we know that, even ballpark?
I would say
I'm sorry, put you on the spot.
Almost, a lot of them do. I mean, let me back up and see how many I said we had before I say that.
And we could get back to that number at another time, but
Yeah.
The reason why I'm asking this because I don't want to just assume, but I think it's very important, not only is this type of enterprise activity, you know, a great community service that adds to the mission of what the district's here to provide, but it, you know, this is another great benefit because this, people who, you know, live and work here, who, you know, who have, these benefits are strengthening our community, and that's something that I'm very happy to see.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, how did you come up with the $1.50 number as the recommendation? Did you study other programs in order to try to be competitive? Is it one of those you're trying to pull from other places?
I would say we actually pay well for childcare, but when you're competing with like Target where you can get $17 an hour, it's tough. And like Steve said, the split shift is, most of our employees are local because of the split shift. It would be difficult to live farther away and, you know, come from 7:00 to 9:00 and then come back at 3:00 in the afternoon, so.
The rate of increase of that rate, 2.6%, is that on average with other childcare programs locally?
Yeah, it's the cost of living, so it's the Act One index, so
Okay.
Yeah.
Marjorie, I think you have data showing what some of the other programs actually cost, correct?
I do. In the past, we have shared that with you, and I did make copies if anybody is interested. Be happy to give those to you and just so you can pass them around, yeah.
And we're still, it's safe to say, we're still very competitively priced. Marjorie, correct? We're very competitively priced compared to our peers.
Yes, most of the programs in the area also have to pay for transportation, so that adds greatly to, you know, what they charge, and they're also for-profit programs, which is not something, you know, we're looking to break even and cover our expenses, but we're not looking to make a profit.
And because of the extended program, their success financially, starting in the 2017, 18 fiscal year, the Extended Care Program has contributed $50,000 per year back to the general fund, just as School Nutrition Services has. So it's $50,000 a year, and in Marjorie's budget for the 2021 year, the $50,000 is being proposed once again, coming back to the general fund. Would you like to talk about the actual budget? I think you have a slide for that, correct?
I do have a slide. Let's get to the end. So those are the proposals. This is just the overview of the budget. We're actually expecting to make a substantial amount this year because of, again, the increase in kindergartners. And then for next year, we're really looking to break even as a bottom line, allowing for that increase for our staff.
So even with the increase, the $1.50 per hour increase, even with the $50,000 contribution to the general fund, you're still
Yes, we're budgeted to break even.
So can you help me understand a little more about the $50,000 back to the general fund as opposed to, again, I understand the general fund, the importance of it, but specifically to this particular program, the importance of putting $50,000 back in the general fund as opposed to maybe $50,000 somewhere else in this particular program?
Well, Marjorie, you want to talk about, with the additional funds, that you have been putting money back into the program and other district-wide initiatives also?
Yeah, we have, just to speak to the $50,000, you know, we use the facilities, and there's some wear and tear, you know, with the heats on longer and the air conditioning's on longer because we're in the building, so I think it's important that we, you know, support the school, contribute back as well. As far as some of the other things, we've paid for some AEDs to be added to the school. We've paid for some fans to be added to the school, the elementary schools in particular. So, you know, it's nice to be able to contribute some bonus items back that also frankly, you know, benefit our children and families as well.
Thank you, that really helped me understand it.
Super.
And right now, the total fund balance for the Extended Care Program, including the profit this year, is about $925,000. So the program continues to thrive. There were some, a couple rough years during the recession, maybe about eight, 10 years ago, but the past four or five years have been very successful.
Stephen, curious, with the enterprise funds, is there a maximum amount where their fund balance becomes problematic, like in the eyes of the state?
That's a great question. Not for this program, okay? So there's no limit for this program. For School Nutrition Services, there is. And when Melissa Froelich talks about her budget in the upcoming months, you'll hear some of that, because they're in a situation now where it's almost like a penalty of success. Once you reach a certain level, you can't go any further. So we're trying to reinvest in capital, kitchen equipment, to lower that fund balance. So not for this program, but yes, for School Nutrition Services, and no for Community Ed as well.
This is slightly off-topic, but circling back to the monthly fees, do we offer any financial help?
Yeah, the state and county both have subsidized funds that they offer to low-income families. They have to apply through the county, and then they're eligible, if they're eligible for those, we have a contract with the county. So they would pay us a small weekly fee, and the county pays the difference.
Okay, thanks.
So we're asking for your approval to place this on the February 20th action meeting. There'll be a couple components to that. It'll be the Extended School Care Program fees for 2021. It will be the summer camp program pricing as well. And then the final, the final budget will actually be dealt with at a subsequent meeting, approval of the budget. I think we typically do those like in May for the enterprise funds. But for your promotion and publicity, you really need to know the rate information and the camp
Yes, parents are calling already for registration for next year and for summer camp.
I'm sorry, you did say work session?
For the action, yep. February 20th, please.
So can I have a motion to move the proposed items to action?
Second.
Any more discussion, questions? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Well done.
Okay, next presentation we have is our award-winning Mr. Kranak. Nick is going to cover the transportation budget. First, he's going to provide an overview of the transportation department in general, and then we'll actually go into the budget. So attached in Board Docs, we have three parts. So as we get into the administrative departmental-level budget presentations, there's three parts. We have a one-page executive summary, followed by the slide deck, and the third part is the actual line-by-line detail of that particular department's budget. So Nick, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. So like Steve said, I'm going to give you a brief overview of our department. I see we have two new board members since I was here last, well, that are here tonight. So I want to give you a little overview of our department. Our department, as compared to other transportation departments in Montgomery County and really around the state around the state, is very unique. Most departments are either 100% in-house or 100% outsourced. We have a hybrid, which basically means we have our own full-time staff, we have our own subsystem, our own van drivers, and then we also outsource to several different companies to help us with the overflow. First student does all of our, our non-public runs, and they also do, now they're up to 20 public runs for us. So our driver personnel, we have, currently, we have 61 full-time benefit-eligible CDL bus drivers, and then we have three full-time benefit-eligible van drivers. We have five full-time benefit-eligible bus monitors, and the rest of those monitors are subs. 33 substitute CDL drivers, 21 substitute van drivers, and 37 substitute bus monitors. So as you see, we have a mix of subs, full-time. Within that full-time, we have what are called floaters, which are basically our permanent subs, which if somebody calls out there, the pool that is taken from first, that cover the runs before we start calling substitutes. As far as our office staff, one coordinator of transportation, which is me, we have three full-time routing specialists. One does public school, one does special education, and the other one does non-public routing. We have a full-time dispatch supervisor, a department secretary, and a field trip coordinator, lead driver trainer, bus driver, kind of jack-of-all-trades, extraordinaire-type person in our office. She does a little bit of everything. And then as far as our maintenance staff is concerned, we have a full-time mechanic supervisor and five mechanics. So right now, we currently have 136 vehicles. First student has 20 of our public school runs. They also, Tropiano Van Company also does 16 of our public school runs, more of our special ed students in our schools that are further away that we, it's difficult for us to transport to. We transport to schools all around the region. We have schools in all five counties, Philadelphia, Bucks, Chester, Montgomery, and Delaware. So we go all over the place. As far as non-publics are concerned, we will transport within a 10-mile radius from the closest border to our district. So depending on where the school is, we find the closest border, and if that school is within 10 miles through a traversable road, we will, we are obligated to provide transportation. So just to give you an example, we have a school next year that is, or this year is within the 10-mile radius, and next year they're moving their shop to Quakertown, which is outside of the radius, so we are no longer providing transportation to that school. First student has 35 non-public runs for us, and Tropiano does four of our non-public schools. Sometimes they do full day, sometimes they do half-day. It all depends on the needs of the students. Our non-public students transported last year were 1,800, and our public school was 11,087. Both of the, the number for public school students was up slightly from the year before, and the non-public students is down slightly. We also have serviced 43 non-public schools within that 10-mile radius, and in the 2018, 2019 school year, we drove 2,261,973 miles, and the total diesel consumption for that year was 265,120. And again, I will move on to this later, but that number will go down next year as we transition our fleet to propane. We now currently have 14 propane buses within our fleet, and they are all active every day. We just placed a PO for seven more Bluebird propane buses. They should be delivered, well, they have to be delivered sometime before June 12th, I think was the date, but we aren't expecting any issues with that. We're actually probably thinking more along the lines of April to May, somewhere in that range, so we might even be able to use them for this school year.
Nick, when I, how can I tell a propane bus on the road? What do I have to look for?
There is a, well, if we get Bluebirds, it will be a green bird on the bus, and you probably won't hear it as well. It is much quieter. You could basically stand, I know a lot of you have actually ridden on the bus. If you're on a diesel bus, you, you pretty much can't have a conversation without screaming. If you're on a propane bus, you can just talk in your normal voice, and it is really quiet, which really helps with the student behavior. Our average age right now, as it stands, is 11.41. That's down from 12.6, and when I started here, it was, I want to say 14 and a half. So we are slowly chipping away at that average age of our fleet, which actually does help with the state subsidy, which I will get to later. After we take delivery of the seven new buses that we just ordered, our average age will be 10.35 years, which is pretty good, considering where we were at just three years ago. I am requesting $1 million to continue transitioning from diesel to propane. With a million dollars, we can buy anywhere from 10 to 12 buses, depending on which type of bus we need. We do have a need for microbuses, so microbuses are much less than full-size conventional buses, so they run about 76,000. So if we start replenishing them, we might be able to stretch that million dollars a little more. And then we can also start buying full-size buses, whatever we need, we have to take a look, but micro is our big need right now.
Does the school district ever look to buy used propane buses, or they're all just so new yet, there's none in the used market?
It's a new technology. There are no used buses out there right now.
Thank you.
So if we get a million dollars per year and we start replenishing our buses, million dollars, I average 10 buses per year would take us to 2032 to replenish our whole fleet. A gas or diesel? We have some, the new ones? Well, we'll find out, but, but they actually last longer, because, I mean, there's less filters, there's, there's no particles that need to be filtered out, uses less oil, the gases, the propane is actually cleaner burning than diesel, so there's less particulate matter in there, so we expect them to last a long time. Ooh, our diesels? We have some diesels, I think our oldest one is 22 years old. So we do quite a bit to maintain them, but it's time that we start replacing some of our old dinosaurs.
How many of the buses that we have at the moment are basically decommissioned? Like just not being used?
Right now, not too many. I know Bus 64 just blew an engine, and that has 300,000 miles on it, so I don't know, five to, maybe five to eight.
Because that does count into that factor into the average age, correct?
It does, that's our entire fleet, right?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, those buses, we, our decommissioned buses, we, they've been taken out. I mean, if we don't use them, they're off our rolls, it doesn't count towards the subsidy. We don't use them. But there's only a couple of those.
Four or three years ago, when that number was like 14 years of the age act, when you first got here?
Yeah, with part of the grant, we had to decommission them. So, so we took, we got the grant for 10 school buses, and part of the deal was if we buy new propane buses, we had to decommission 10. So we're looking to do that again. We actually just applied to a federal grant. The last grant we received was a state grant. The federal grant wasn't merit-based or didn't take into account the age of your fleet or anything like that. It was strictly a lottery, and we didn't do so hot in the lottery. We were, I believe, on the waitlist second to last for our one application, and 140 on, so, yeah, we didn't do so well with the federal, but they did open that up again. So that application is due on February 26th, so we will be applying for that. Also, that is the Driving PA Forward Grant that we received for the last go-around. That is, they said sometime within March that's going to be opened up. From what I gather, in speaking with some representatives from the Department of Environmental Protection, that the amount of money that is going to be given out this time around is going to be significantly less than last time. Last time, we got about $40,000 per bus, which basically was covered half the cost. And then we also got the alternative fuels incentive grant for the 18,000-gallon propane tank, which was installed on October 19th, and that came out to 155,000. So all told, we got 450, or 600, do you know the number, Steve? 600, 600-some thousand?
You have the 155 for the, the tank, and 459,000 for the vehicle. And just a reminder, the Driving PA Forward Grant, that was actually part of the Volkswagen settlement. So every state that was a party to that lawsuit received money. And Pennsylvania have received quite a bit of money. The problem is, there were so many entities that submitted that first year, there's very few dollars that are actually left in that fund now. So it's probably unlikely we'll receive any additional money there, but I think the AFIG, that alternative fuel incentive grant, that's a state-run program. That's something that we can apply to each year.
Yeah, and one thing with the Driving PA Forward Grant, a lot of the, the grant recipient, grant recipients didn't convert to propane or alternative fuels. Most, if not all of them, I think North Penn was one of two or three that actually converted to propane. Everyone else bought what's called clean diesel, which I think is kind of an oxymoron. But, yeah, so with the AFIG, we know, they know that all that money is going to go towards alternative fuels, whether that's propane or electric, whatever the school district wants to do. With the propane, we now pay 96.5 cents per gallon, as opposed to the $2.04 per gallon we pay for diesel fuel. Now with that 96.5 cents, Congress, right before we went to winter break, approved the 36 cent per gallon federal rebate. So at the end of the year, we will submit all the documents that we have to the federal government, and we will get 36 cents per gallon back, which we budgeted 60,000 gallons this year, and then 90,000 for next year.
So our net cost will be 60 cents a gallon?
Are maintenance costs expected to be less on the propane buses simply because you have less points of failure, less filters, less work?
Much less, yes. So just to give you an example, a diesel bus takes about 27 gallons of oil for an oil change, which is every 5,000 miles. The propane bus takes about seven. So our cost for an oil change went from $56 with labor to $18, and that's just oil. The engine runs more, like, it's basically a gasoline engine, so, again, there's less filters and everything like that. The gas actually, the fuel runs cleaner, so it's, the maintenance is much less than what we're dealing with, with diesel buses.
Mr. Kranek, just a question about your exploration of electric vehicles. How does that relate to cost of ownership versus propane?
So I've done a lot of research on electric vehicles. I think the technology is there, but it's not really attainable for most school districts. It's extremely expensive. To give you an example, one of the quotes that I received, for a bus that can drive 155 miles per charge, which may or may not be able to get our kids around the district this size, for a smaller district, it may work. North Penn probably wouldn't unless the technology becomes more, it gets better. But that price was 400,000. I can get you the exact quote.
That's like a Class A, or no, a Class A would be a, a smaller vehicle then for pricing.
Yeah, so the full-size bus was 400,000, and that includes, you have to, for it to, for it to work for us, we would need the quick charge, which is an additional $6,000, and the energy that goes into quick charging a, a bus is much more expensive, because one, you have to do it during the day. If you're charging buses overnight, the energy's less expensive, but it takes a large amount of energy to charge those buses. So in the future, I think it's worth looking into again, once the technology catches up and the price comes down, but I just don't think spending $400,000 on a single vehicle is really feasible for us right now.
I appreciate you continuing to scan and make those comparisons, and thanks for even those details, that's helpful.
You're welcome. Yeah, and that, and those quotes were very recent, they were from December, so the price is really, even with getting grants for electric buses, it's still, I mean, we're looking over 300,000. Here's a picture of our new propane tank, an 18,000-gallon tank, right behind the high school. We got some decals on there. And like Steve said earlier, we have received the PASBO Award of Achievement, which I'm pretty proud of. He gave you the overview of the, the award. We won basically, our submission was called "Propane Bus and Infrastructure Initiative: Saving Green by Going Green," and we think that a lot of school districts around the state and the county will, would be able to benefit by doing this. I've actually worked with a couple. Pen Ridge is coming to visit us next week, and worked with a couple other school districts that have been interested in this. So it really is something that other school districts can replicate, and with that grant money available, it really does help offset the cost, the initial setup cost to, to go to propane. And I think it's really beneficial for our students and our community. I mean, really, it just takes those fumes out of the neighborhoods, it's quieter ride, makes our kids safer, and it has been shown, there's research out there that shows that test scores are higher for kids that ride on a propane bus as opposed to a diesel bus.
I think Ms. Ramich brought up a little while ago, the idea about a quieter bus could very likely be a bus that has less behavior issues on it. I'm just wondering, I don't remember if we actually asked at the time, or is that something that we could take a look at in some way, just to, I mean, do we already have data in terms of like, you know, how many issues we see on particular buses to see if there's any correlation whatsoever?
I mean, we could take a look at the amount of write-ups that we're receiving.
Yeah, basically, something to that level.
I mean, just based on personal experience, talking to the drivers, I mean, they, they love it. They don't have to use a microphone, they don't have to yell over the kids.
Right.
It's quieter. Instead of, if you're driving a diesel bus, you have to yell, doesn't mean that you're angry or upset, you just have to increase the volume of your voice just so the kids can hear you, which they may take as you are yelling at them. And it's, might, they might be offended, but with the, driving a propane bus, you don't, you don't have to do that.
Right.
I think with our need being with the microbuses, that those buses that have the behavior, highest rates of behavior instances are the larger buses that are, you know, more, you know, and coming from areas that are more densely populated, they're, the buses where the seats are packed. So I think if we could look at strategically, if we are buying the larger buses, about placing them within, working with school principals to kind of say, hey, this is, you know, a school bus where I've done ride-alongs, we're trying to address it through a PBIS intervention. I think if we could look at some of those, that would be helpful to also link into school safety and the ECP and other, it'll, it's a nice way of bringing everything together.
Yeah, and we have been doing that. We, I mean, we've taken a look at which buses are, have a high incidence of write-ups, so if they get that, we'll try to move those buses towards those routes, just to make, just to take that extra step to make sure that the behavior is under control.
They're amazing. I just think it makes all the difference when you're not having to yell at your friend, to, you know? You're not yelling at them, you just have to do it because that's the noise level. It just brings that energy down, and, yeah, kids can have that peaceful ride to school and still have that time to socialize with the kids sitting next to them. Have any of the bus drivers switched from diesel to propane and mentioned to you that the, the energy level is more peaceful on the buses? Just from their comments to you?
All of them.
Oh, really? All right, then.
Down the line. And we, we had some drivers who did a test run before we even thought about purchasing this, just to see what, what it was like, and every one of them gave us feedback that was like, I was very skeptical about this, but it's amazing. I mean, i- if you want a ride, we can come, we'll give you a ride one day.
I would like to take a ride someday. I do want to go. Thank you. I'll take up on that invitation.
And we were actually featured on a WHYY piece. And one of the things we did, we took the reporter around on a diesel bus so she could see what it sounds like, a regular conventional bus. And then we drove her around and took her to, we filled up at the propane tank and drove her around the neighborhood. And she, she was amazed that you could just sit there and have a conversation and not have to scream. I missed it. I saw, I saw the article. I didn't get to hear it. Next, I'm going to give you a couple different charts here that basically, this one compares us to similarly sized school districts. So the district we normally compare to is Westchester and Downingtown. And then we threw in Central Bucks in there too, because they have a same amount of students as us. But as far as land area, Westchester and Downingtown are probably the closest. So as you can see, our transportation costs are higher than theirs. Central Bucks does, did meet us there in around twenty-fourteen, but they've gone down. But the only difference between all of these is that Westchester and Downingtown are completely outsourced. Central Bucks is, I, I, I would venture to guess seventy-five percent outsourced and twenty-five percent district-owned. And North Penn were, I guess, probably the other way around, seventy-five and twenty-five.
So I have a, I have a question. So in the transportation cost, is, is the fuel cost and the maintenance cost also included in that number, in that value?
Yes, I actually have a...
I saw, I, I did look at this before.
Okay.
And it was a graph that showed, it was sixty thousand dollars per vehicle. I think it was Satterton? Right there.
Right there. So that arrow right here is North Penn. So that right there isn't really a great spot to be in, because this is basically, it's the cost analysis for the vehicle usage, the utilization rate, and the cost per vehicle. So we are lower on the utilization rate, but higher on the cost per vehicle. Now, this utilization rate, I can almost guarantee is going to go way up next year because of full-day kindergarten. We have, I think last year when we were going through the whole full-day kindergarten process, we budgeted for possibly adding two to three buses. We didn't end up adding any new runs. So through our, our creative bus routers, they figured everything out. They did an amazing job, figured everything out, and we didn't add any new bus runs. So a lot of our buses are close to or at capacity. So that is going to pose some challenging issues for next year, but we're confident we can figure it out.
Back to the slide. It's just interesting when, when we jumped ahead, because I, I, two questions. But there's a five-year expense change, so I'm just letting you know ahead, right? I'm trying to reconcile that, that between some of the earlier charts, but we can come back to that when you hit that. Because that, that's, this might be linked to, to my questions there. How do we rank when it comes down to, what's right before that graph, where we had the four districts? Just for square miles. So we're forty-four square miles?
We're forty-four, yeah.
What is, just ballpark, I mean, are we the largest? Is there a reason that maybe some of these numbers were an outlier because of the square miles that we're covering as opposed to other districts? That, that to me is the X-factor here.
Yeah, so I would say Westchester and Downingtown have much higher square miles than we do. They're just less compact. So whereas we have some densely populated boroughs, they, I, they don't, they have more rural area.
So may that be a factor or because of the type of miles? And, and I don't expect the perfect answer. It could be a dissertation. But I, I do think that's some, there's something to the data there that, that I'd be interested in learning more about to explain why we may be an outlier.
I mean, it's possible, yes, but I, I have to dig into that a little deeper. I don't really have a perfect answer for you right now.
Well, no, I mean, no, you're right. So when I see transportation costs, there could be a factor of the total miles, what their, what the composition of their fleet looks like. Is it, is it dominant diesel? You know, how many propanes? What are the sizes? So, you know, you, it might be that we're making ourselves look worse, but we're really not. But so long as you're comparing apples to apples in every factor included in their transportation costs you've done in yours and haven't layered on additional ones that we shouldn't be penalized with.
Thank you for translating for me.
I don't know what I did.
Yeah, and that's, I'm not trying to do a gotcha. Part of it is to make sure that our data is, is justified so the community understands. If you see a chart, you're going to think that, you know, we're burning money in the engines when really some of these charts tell a different story. And I'm just, that's the only reason why I'm trying to peel back.
Nick, those costs include salary and benefits for drivers, right?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, so we have more of our own drivers. That's your answer.
I think that's, looking at the other three that are on that chart, I think that's really the differentiating factor. We have two that are completely one hundred percent outsourced. We have one of those, a hybrid. And we've, we've done the study here. We know the difference between what it costs to operate one of our own buses versus what we pay for first student. We know there's a delta, and the delta is very similar to what you see between Downingtown and North Penn. I think that's the key difference. These are total costs divided by vehicles. This includes everything on the bar chart. So I think that's the key. That's the key data point, not necessarily miles driven, because it's all in expenses per vehicle. The key is it's, it's, it's cheaper for us to operate a bus where we contract than it is for us to operate it in-house.
So along with what you were saying earlier, so this is a graph of our total expenses for the past ten years. As you can see, it's, it's relatively stable. We're looking at around thirteen million dollars per year. This following graph is, these are our total expensive, expenses less the salary and benefits for our drivers, which we're looking at about five and a half million.
Nick, if you could stay on that chart, I, I think that chart is amazing, because this really demonstrates the operational efficiency of our support departments. You're going to see something similar when Mr. Schneider gives his presentation for facilities and operations. But this is our concerted effort to take money and drive it towards the instructional program. So we've been challenging our support programs for a long period of time, for ten years minimum, to try to be more efficient and more cost-effective, and this perfectly demonstrates that. I mean, it's amazing that your total expenses can be less now than they were ten years ago. I mean, that's unheard of when you think about it, for a department of that size.
So here's the five-year expense change for all twenty-two Montgomery County school districts, and this is for per-student spending. And as you can see, North Penn's at the bottom of the list. Sheltonham's way up there, but we are close to the, or second from last. Not sure how Upper Perk is doing that, but. This is one of my favorite charts. This is the actual dollars we spend per student over the past ten years. So as you see, it's again relatively, it's, it is stable. I mean, there's very little change there. But while we were doing that, our, our percent of our operating expenses has actually gone down in the past ten years. So we went from, what's that, eight, I can't see. What's that number?
Yep, eight percent.
Eight percent down to six percent last year. So we're actually very efficient over the past ten years, where our operating expenses as compared to the rest of the budget are, have gone down.
And just to clarify, that's transportation expenses relative to the entire general fund budget. It's gone from eight percent to six percent in ten years.
This is another good chart. This is all of our Montgomery County counterparts. Basically, the spending ranking, the average spending per student is eleven hundred forty-one dollars. And as you can see, North Penn is below that average. We are also below the average of the total operating expenses. So again, that speaks to our efficiency that we've had over the past decade. Next is a graph of our total number of pupils transported. As you can see, the green is public school, and then we have non-public and charter school. We have very few charter school students. Our non-public has gone down over the years, and I guess those students are coming back to the district. So that is what's going on in this graph. So the PDE transportation subsidy, oh.
So that, that peak, that increase in two thousand sixteen was?
So there was, from what I'm told, there was some kind of agreement made that students could decline bus service at the time to get a parking spot. I don't exactly know what the, what the deal was. That was before my time. But the students were able to say, I'm going to drive to school, but I won't take a spot on the bus. So with that, we freed up space on the bus, but then the, the number of pupils transported went down. And then the next year, it went way back up, because we like to put those students on the bus because we get money for them from the state. There's a very long and convoluted formula for the state subsidy that's out there. Takes into account miles traveled with students, miles without students, your market value aid ratio of the district, which is basically how wealthy your district is, the age of your bus. So if you, if you are driving newer buses, you get more money than if you're driving an older bus. The formula's a little different for contracted buses, so there's a lot that goes into that formula. So that dip there was probably based, from what I told you earlier, about the, the kids not riding. So we're inching our way back up, and we try to be as efficient as possible. The capacity of the bus is a big issue. So if we are, if we have an eighty-four-passenger bus and we have seventy kids on there, that's not good for the subsidy. So we try to put as many kids on the bus as possible without overcrowding. And that helps us get as much money back from the state as possible.
I was wondering, do we keep track of the number of minutes students are on a bus? For example, obviously, if we put a bunch of kids on one bus and that bus takes a longer route, some students, especially elementary-age students, are going to be on that bus a lot longer. Do we keep track of those types of numbers? Is that a practice in this business at all?
We keep track of miles. We don't keep track of time. I mean, we could do that. We have GPS on all of our buses.
Yeah, it might be nice to understand what the student experience is as we go through these changes. There's a lot of figures to worry about, but I wonder if maybe that's a place to look at to make sure that we're staying on top of that as well, especially as it pertains to behavior and things like that.
We have GPS, so we'd be able to do that. If we could take, do, just spot-check certain buses on certain days and let you know what the, the length of time is from, say, kids getting picked up on Snyder Avenue going to Inglewood.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Actually, with one of the initiatives you're going to speak about, Mr. Kranek, with the Scour-Chip initiative, you know, ultimately, our goal is to have a student scan on and scan off the bus. That data will make it really easy to determine how long a student was on the bus.
So just some areas of potential savings that we could have if, if we really needed to find somewhere to get some money. We could reduce the number of middle school and high school late runs. We could, we will continue to control our overtime cost with hiring as many substitute drivers and as many CDL van drivers out there. So if anybody knows anybody who's looking for a job, let them know we're hiring. And we can, as drivers retire, we can send our buses up to, to first student if they're able to take them. At this time, they are not, so we are figuring everything out. We're using subs for all these drivers, all the runs. We had two recent retirements that were unable to be taken by first students, so we're doing them with substitute bus drivers.
How much longer is the contract that we have with first student?
We just entered into a new contract last year, right? So I think we still have, I think we're in the first year of this year. I think it was a five-year deal.
It's the first of five.
Yeah, we have four additional years left. We did an RFP last spring. So the new contract, we've been with them a long period of time, but the new contract just started July of nineteen.
Locked in, because I do remember, didn't they take an early out, a year early when we did that? Prompting us to do that or something?
Yeah, we removed that language from this agreement.
Okay, so we're, that's a solid.
Solid five years, yes.
So some of our upcoming plans, I mentioned that we had GPS on all of our buses. However, that GPS that we purchased, I think it was probably five or six years ago. As with any electronic device, it starts to get old and out of date. And it's actually not supported by our vendor anymore. So as the, as those units break, we have to either buy new ones and replace them or go without having a GPS in there, which we don't want to do. So we are planning on doing an RFP for GPS. And with that, we would like to do a parent app as well. So basically, parents can log on to their smartphone and put in their bus number. They can get a notification. They can set the, the parameters. So they, they want to know when a bus is a mile away or five miles away. They can get a notification on their phone. And they can also see where, when their bus is going to be dropping their kids off in the morning. So I, I think that is a really useful tool. It would certainly cut down on the amount of phone calls that we get, especially at the beginning of the year. And that's something that would be offered to every parent at no cost. And then we would also be doing the Scholar-Chip, which Steve was talking about. That is something that we got a grant for through the school safety. And we are going to be adding the tablets to every bus. So basically, what happens is you'll, kids will have a swipe card, kind of like the one I have to get into the buildings. And when they get on the bus, they will swipe on, and when they, and it will say, it will let the driver know that that child is supposed to be on that bus. And then there's a way to override that if they're riding with a friend or something like that, but there, that's, that details. And then when they get off the bus, it will let them, the driver will pull up. He pushes a button, said, this is the stop I'm at, and the kids will get off. If somebody tries to get off the bus at a wrong stop, it will be notified with a loud beep and alarm. So.
I, I just want to remark that, you know, it's, as one board member on the Safe Schools Committee, that these initiatives, very excited to see go forward. I know with my fellow colleagues, we have a lot to consider within the budget. But this for, we tout ourselves to be a twenty-first century school district, using technology to not only be more efficient and make education more effective, but also, you know, for safety and communication. This, you know, this initiative, this slide alone, these two items, personally, this is something I'd really like to see as a reality next year.
Yeah, so actually, we just purchased five tablets, and we are going to be installing them on Oak Park school buses. We have five buses at Oak Park. So we're going to install those, and once we get the software from Scholar-Chip loaded on to those, those tablets, we purchased a couple different types of mounts that we're going to test out for the buses to make sure that whatever, we're going over bumps or, or speed bumps or anything like that, the tablets stay safe, but we're going to be rolling that out. And then hopefully, by the beginning of next year, we're ready to go full-on through, for all the district.
One more digression, my last, my last on this question. And I apologize to everyone, because it's a little bit out of scope for the presentation. However, I'll pull my Safe Schools card. Mr. Skoraki, Mr. Kranek, the, the Scholar-Chip program, you know, so in, in my profession, I've actually done assessments in California where there's a requirement for technology to be used, much like these iPads, especially for kindergarten and lower grades. And is there at least that adaptability or scalability for Scholar-Chip for those younger students? You know, in California in particular, it's used, right, for custody issues, tracking. But I just want to, is this a platform that we can expand to that type of safety and accountability for our youngest students?
Absolutely. In fact, this is what kind of prompted our, our research and analysis, but bringing on Scholar-Chip, because there was an incident a couple of years ago where a student, a kindergarten student unfortunately got off at the wrong stop. And this program will prevent that from happening. Because every driver, especially in the beginning of the year, he might not know if the student's a kindergarten student or a third-grade student, or whatever the case might be. And, you know, if the student says, well, this is my stop, you know, the driver might say, okay, fine, be on your way. But now we can verify. But now, we can verify that in real time, right at the point of entry and exit. So this was really designed around the safety of, in particular, kindergarten students to ensure that they're not getting off at an incorrect stop.
And it has the capacity, I understand that's more cost and it might not be realistic, but the ability at the building level for kindergarten students in their classrooms or within the building for us to be able to know where they're at and when?
Yeah, this program can be scaled, and one of our discussions, that might be something years down the road, but a student throughout a building could scan in for attendance purposes or could scan in for medical services at the nursing suite, as an example. And then, at least in a discussion about how much access then new parents have with respect to a child's movement throughout the building throughout the day. But long-term, that is definitely a possibility, having it integrated with attendance and movement throughout the building.
That's, and I agree with, and that's ECP, rest of the administration and Board to Decide. I've seen it used very effectively, at least in some of my visits to schools in California, just in the kindergarten classrooms. That is very interesting, just for that population. Thank you.
I wonder, though, these innovations, they can't be extended to the students who ride on the First Student runs, though, correct? I mean, they have their own buses, so this wouldn't be something we would be installing on their equipment, right?
And actually, we, one of the buses at Oak Park is a First Student bus. So we're going to, I mean, it's a pilot program, so we're gonna try it out. We're gonna train them on the program, see how it works out. There's no really installation. It's just all we need to do is add a mount. Yeah, we add a mount, and everything is on a cellular tablet, so we get that information in real time. So if we say that First Student Bus Two-Fifty-Three is missing a kindergarten, or we can go on and find the student's name and find out what stop they got off at. So again, that's, we're gonna have to spend time to train all the drivers, whether it's a North Penn driver or a First Student driver. So that may, there may be a little learning curve there, but that's why we're doing the pilot program, to get everyone to work out all the kinks before we roll this out to the rest of the district.
So a couple of things, and following up on what Mr. Kossis said regarding the Safe Schools Committee, which I just became a member of, I think this portion of your presentation would be a perfect transparent informational piece to bring to that particular committee, because those two items, that Scholar-Chip and then the new GPS, they have, they have dates that are tangible at this point. Some of the other pieces are out in the future, which would be nice to hear safety nets down the road, but these two, if you knew when the date was for which you wanted to put the RFP out for the new GPS, if that's coming up and that's something you'll expedite, that would be wonderful. The other pieces, how many of the buses right now, or what percent possibly, don't have the GPS because it failed?
We currently have six that have GPSs that have failed. And none of our propane buses have GPS yet, but we are purchasing GPS units for each one of those from the newer version of the GPS.
Okay.
So we're purchasing those, and there's no real installation. It's just you plug it into the RBD, and then you go.
Again, back, circling back with, you know, both committees, I think that these would be really important milestones to communicate out to parents.
Definitely, yeah. We're, we've had GPS for probably about five years, and it's, it is invaluable. I mean, we can get data on where students were left, well, not exactly where they were left up, but when doors open. If a parent says, "This bus didn't come to my stop three days in a row," we can pull it up and say, "Look, this bus was there at seven-twenty-one," or we could say, "Oh, I'm sorry, the bus didn't come. We'll send someone." We can use it for accidents, just to find out the path of what a driver was taking, knowing where they were going, which way they were facing, whether or not they hit the brake. So there's a lot of information we can gain from, from GPS.
Right, and bringing it back to safety, again, which measurements would be most important for the safety aspect, back to this Safe School Committee?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask, just because we have a number of other presentations tonight that maybe we could save some of these questions for email. We have, Tom is waiting, so, or take them up at Safe Schools, so, but we do need to keep this moving.
I'm sorry.
No, it's no problem, no problem.
Okay, Mr. Kranek, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And again, the third part, that we're not gonna cover in detail, but the third part is the actual line-by-line transportation budget for the upcoming year. It's proposed, and also some historical information. So with that, our next speaker is Mr. Schneider, who's gonna cover the Facilities and Operations Department, Department Overview and the Budget for the upcoming year. And Mr. Schneider also has some benchmarking data as well.
Good evening. Thank you. In front of you is the executive summary for the Facilities and Operations Department. All in all, the Facilities and Operations Department is responsible for the upkeep, maintenance, repair, and operation of the twenty-one buildings of North Penn School District. The twenty-one buildings in North Penn School District have approximately two million fifty thousand square feet under roof. This is a substantial size school district compared to many others. There are some that are larger, obviously. Philadelphia's a little large, quite large. Central Bucks is larger, but we're comparative to many of the larger school districts such as Downey Town, Pensbury, Westchester, Council Rock. We are, our buildings are on five hundred total acres, which is, includes parking lots, athletic fields, open areas, grounds, things like that. So it's a pretty extensive operation. And also, included with the overall upkeep, maintenance, repair, and operation of the buildings, the Facilities Department's also responsible for the planning, execution of all the construction projects, interfacing with the professionals and the staff of the district. Also, we have capital projects on an annual basis, and also many service contracts on an annual basis, which we're responsible for coordinating and maintaining. This is all accomplished with a hundred and thirty employees. We have custodial maintenance, grounds, support personnel, administrative assistance, and supervisory personnel. Of the maintenance personnel, the maintenance personnel is responsible for the repair, preventative maintenance of all building systems, including the building envelopes, the roofs, the interior of the building, boilers, chillers, HVAC systems, security systems, plumbing, electrical, and so on, all the operational systems of all the buildings. The grounds personnel are responsible for the upkeep, maintenance of all the athletic fields, buildings and grounds, playgrounds, trees, shrubs, and snow removal. Custodial staff are responsible for the daily upkeep and cleaning of all the buildings. In our day, our head custodians and day shift custodians are also responsible for general maintenance of the buildings. They will replace air filters, they will replace light bulbs, and do whatever general maintenance they feel comfortable with inside the buildings. They're also responsible for walking their buildings daily, looking out for safety items, trip hazards, slippery ice. Example, this morning, we had to jump immediately on a salting operation because we had a little bit of a frost situation, but as soon as the sun came up, we had black ice throughout the district. So the staff are responsible for all hitting the sidewalks with salt and de-icing materials, and also responsible for the, for the snow removal. The day custodians and head custodians are also responsible for close grounds maintenance around the buildings, flower beds, grass cutting, trimming. So they have a huge responsibility of the buildings. Support personnel, administrative assistants, and supervisory. This is the staff that helps support not only the department, but the overall district. With the overall district, we have some purchasing in the SSC, the Support Services Center. We have the warehouse personnel, Carrier. The Carrier is on a daily route around the building, picking up mail, going to the post office, things like that. We have a copy center, which is used by the district. We have facilities use personnel, departmental support, and also supervisory. One of the items which many people do not realize that Facilities and Operations is responsible for are compliance responsibilities. There are a host of compliance issues which a school district must comply with, starting out with AHERA, the Asbestos Hazard Emergency Response Act. We have management plans, we have to do training on an annual basis of our personnel. We have the U.S. EPA RRP, which is for lead, where we have to train our personnel in the maintenance, and whenever there's painting or construction activities, that they have to be aware that lead may be around, so we have to be able to test for it and do any remediations. We have the NFPA fire life safety inspections on an annual basis, sprinklers, fire alarms, fire extinguishers, so on and so forth. And then we have a host of state requirements. And one of the interesting things which I, Mr. Skoraki and I experienced, we, back in two thousand fourteen, we got a letter from the DEP that we have a regulated dam on our properties at the high school, which was a complete surprise to us. So there are so many regulations out there that have to be followed. We have to have annual inspections, and Facilities and Operations are responsible for that. Because any one of these, at any time, anyone could come in and ask for an audit or an inspection, and we have to be able to show that we're in compliance. And one of the biggest assets that the SSC has for this compliance responsibility is Mr. Dan Linsky, who is, came from the environmental side, and he's responsible for maintaining the records of all these, of many of these, not all of them. So, so that's an aspect which I don't know if many people realize, the amount of compliance that we have to follow. But North Penn is on top of all these compliance issues and handle them on a daily basis.
I have a question about the, the support services. So for the preventive maintenance and then the corrective maintenance, do you have a work, does the district have a work backlog system, like, that you maintain? And does one of the support personnel have the capability to log everything and prioritize it, and even the dates that some of these inspections would be due?
We have a work order system that is administered by a company called SchoolDude. SchoolDude specializes in a work order system specifically for schools. They also have, that's our facilities use software. So they specifically tailor it for school districts. So we have a work order system, which people around the district put in a work order that, "I need this work to be performed." We also have that preventative maintenance work orders for all the equipment and all the, you know, roof maintenance on, biannually, go up on the roof, check your roof drains, things like that. So yes, we do. And those preventative work orders come out automatically to the technicians. The other work orders are assigned. And we do have backlogs of work orders, but, you know, every day, we have people working on work orders when they're not. And then occasionally, we have emergencies that we have to take care of immediately, but yes, we have a work order system that we can pull reports and look at the quantities, the numbers, how fast, how fast their turnarounds are, things like that.
KPIs that you look at to identify where you can have efficiencies and, and you can see trends with the, with the types of, I guess, the corrective maintenance?
Yes, and we also can track it per building, per system.
Okay.
So that if we start to notice that we have continual problems with...
Degradation of something somewhere?
Yep, yes. One of the biggest things in school facilities, which is in my mind one of the most important things to track, is what I call windshield time. Now technicians, if they need a part or widget, they run and get it. Well, is that the most efficient, effective way of doing it? So that's something that we're gonna be looking at, and that's a constant look all the time to try and bring efficiency around that.
And Ms. Wesley, I'd as well that I've seen SchoolDude over the past two years, the system here with the data, and some very good analysis, but also the way they can give us some executive-level summaries I think you'll find interesting. We delve into that at least two times a year through Facilities and Operations.
Thank you.
So moving forward to the twenty-twenty-one facilities budget. So the facilities budget overall is fifteen point seven million. And coming forward to the next slide, you'll see something that shows the facilities budget at a greater amount than the fifteen point seven. The reason for that is security and safety is under the operations budget in PDE, and Mr. Dorr will be doing that separately. So this fifteen point seven is just the facilities and operations budget, does not include other ancillaries. So major components of this year's budget, salaries and benefits, obviously, we have about ten point five million dollars in salaries and benefits. The energy and utility lineup, which includes electric, natural gas, water, sewer, and recycling waste, is about two point six million. At this point, the North Penn School District does not burn any heating oil whatsoever in any of their buildings. Years ago, we used to have a requirement of what was called interruptible supply of natural gas, that if it got cold out, Pika would tell you to shut off your natural gas, you have to burn heating oil. Well, we changed our tariffs some years ago, so that that was eliminated, and we only burned natural gas. Even though we do have the capability of having a dual fuel, burning oil's probably two and a half times the cost of natural gas right now. So we are strictly electricity and natural gas. The building system inspections and repairs, that nine hundred thousand dollars includes a lot of those required inspections, such as fire alarm inspections, sprinkler inspections, fire extinguisher inspections, and that has to occur annually. And typically, that occurs the day after graduation, and then goes through the entire summer with all the inspections that are required. The custodial maintenance and ground supplies are about nine hundred thousand dollars total for all the areas. And then we have security monitoring and some professional services at about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And then capital equipment replacements at around two hundred thousand dollars. They're the major items of the budget. There are many small items, incidentals like training and things, but they're the major Now, this graph, this is a five-year comparison of the Facilities and Operations budget, and you can see over the last three years that it has increased, from two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty, it has increased slightly. And this shows the breakdown of all the different categories, such as the budget one hundred, the professional, I'm sorry, one hundred is the salaries, the blue, and then you have benefits on top of that. So you can see the salary and benefits are the bulk of the budget, and then other expenditures above that. This is an interesting slide. This is a comparison of a ten-year, from two thousand nine to two thousand eighteen, comparison of where the expenditures have grown or decreased in different areas. North Penn, you can see, is a minus five point two-two percent over the past ten years. Average in the Montgomery County IU has been an increase of over fourteen percent. And of like-school districts, it's a decrease of less than one percent. So North Penn has decreased our Facilities and Operations budget dramatically more than most of the school districts in the area.
I'd like to give kudos to Mr. Schneider, because he played a large role in that with some energy savings that occurred primarily in the two thousand eleven to two thousand fourteen time period. And Tom, remind me the exact amount that we shed in terms of our total energy costs over that period of time.
Well, when I came on board December two thousand ten, there was a strong effort for energy conservation for a couple of years prior, and they had reached about an eight percent reduction. By two thousand fourteen, we had an overall thirty-seven percent reduction in a course of about three years, which equated to about two million dollars a year off of the overall Facilities and Operations budget. And that was a cumulative effort of a lot of different factors. It was good purchasing, good operations, good engagement of the staff and student body, and focusing on energy for a lot of years. So it was a, it was a total district effort to achieve that.
And thank you for highlighting this, even as school board directors who, we get to roll up our sleeves and go through this information many times, and though a lot of this is made public, I think that you're putting a real fine point on, you know, that story that needs to be genuinely, the genuine story that needs to be communicated to the public and for taxpayers. And many people think that it's just an open checkbook, and North Penn School District continues to raise taxes and spend, 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 when actually, there are certainly issues when it comes down to why we need those taxes raised, but the checkbook has been closed more often than open when you look at these Facilities and Operations numbers. And I hope that the community is able to understand these numbers much more going forward in simple graphics like this. So thank you for making it plain.
And just a reminder, too, these charts come from Forecast Five. This is our data analytical software tool that we use. This is our data analytical software tool that we use. It's really remarkable for benchmarking, and it has the data in from all school districts in the Commonwealth that we can compare on various data points. In this particular example, of course, it's the facilities and operations budget, but that picture alone is really powerful when we talk about comparing our data against our peers, not only locally, but statewide. And it drives home the point once again that our support services, whether it's transportation or facilities, we're really trying to drive those departments and mandate that they become much more efficient, so that way the dollars can go into the instructional program where they really should be. And both the two presentations we saw tonight are really perfect examples of that.
So moving on to the next slide, here is the two-year, 10-year comparison of the overall facilities and operations budget, and this is without salary and benefits. So this is just the hands-on, down-and-dirty operation. So you can see in 2009 where it was, and then by 2014, over the course of those five years, the drop-off. Then there's, it's been relatively stable for the remaining years, with 2018 where we're showing there, just, it's been relatively stable over the course of those following years. Now, and just one point I'd like to also make is that this year, 2021 budget, as compared to the 1920 budget, is a 1.6% increase overall. So it's 1% below the Act 1 index. So that's just another indicator that, you know, we're trying our best in facilities and operations.
And to add on to what Mr. Scrocky said, so here we are, you know, embarking on a capital expenditure program for 10 years. So what this story tells me, not necessarily with the transportation, but with this particular presentation on facilities and operations, this is the team that has the strength and has proven that they will manage this new capital expenditures program. When all these upgrades are made, this is the team you want, because they've already proven, they have a track record of always looking to reduce costs in this particular area. So I think that's a really great story to tell.
Thank you. So moving forward, this is a slide that shows the facilities and operations budget as a percentage of the overall budget. And as you can see, this is all the districts in Montgomery County. North Penn's percentage of overall to, compared to the general fund is 6.4%. There's only one school district that's less than us, and that's Lowermoreland, which is a district of a much smaller size. They also outsource an awful lot of their work, they don't have in-house support. And you can see the percentages increasing throughout Montgomery County, all the way up to almost 9% of the overall budget. Now, to compare to like-school districts with the same data, we selected Council Rock, North Penn, Downington, Westchester, and Central Bucks. Now, as mentioned earlier, Council Rock, North Penn, Downington, and Westchester are relatively the same-sized school districts. And in facilities and operations, it's very difficult to take a cost-per-student view on it, because if we have 2 million 50,000 square feet, your student body can increase or decrease by 10 or 15%, but your costs, overall costs are not going to as far as maintenance, utilities, and things like that. So percents and dollars per square foot really are the better metrics. And you can see here, the only school district that less a percent as compared to general fund is Council Rock, with Central Bucks being at 8.4%. So North Penn has done a tremendous job at maintaining that 6.4. I know in the years that I was here prior between 2011, 2016, we were always in that 6%, 6.5% of overall budget. So that's really where, I guess that's what I would call the sweet spot for us, because we have the revenues and the staff to maintain, but we're not overspending. We're not, you know, we don't get a lot of money and expect to get a lot more. So I think that's right where we need to be, and we'll make sure that we maintain that for the future. So some operational efficiencies for 2021. We have, our electricity is locked until June 30, 2024, at 5.256 cents per kilowatt hour. Natural gas is locked also at $2.654 per decathour of natural gas. So those two things, what we will do with those is we'll just manage with the consumption. We're not going to be managing, you know, purchasing or watching the markets, because they're already locked, so we'll manage consumption at this point. Under energy management, we will always continuously review and adjust building operation. Once buildings are renovated, turned over to us, we go through and look at each individual unit, make sure that the systems are operating properly, and make sure they're operating efficiently. I've always said that an engineer has to design to code, he doesn't design for operations. We have to then figure out how to run the building and operate the building the most efficient way, because just letting it run for code doesn't work. So we will, we have the staff, we have a very talented HVAC staff, understands controls, and we can get into the buildings and actually adjust. And they've been doing a great job. I've been sitting with them on numerous occasions and reviewing where things are, and they've been doing a great job with that.
Question on the Act 129. I tried to see when, does that expire? I couldn't find it, where it expires.
Well, Act 129, let me explain what Act 129 is and how it's funded. Act 129 started back in 2010, and it's a rebate program. It started out as a rebate program for energy-efficient changes to a building. So it's a little bit of a cumbersome process years ago, where you had to actually submit a lot of paperwork, and there were prescriptive and there were non-prescriptive methods. So what, the PUC has allowed, well, before I get into that, the way this is funded, Act 129 is funded, it's actually funded by a 2% charge on all commercial utility bills. So for example, all of our PICO and PP&amp;L utility bills get a 2% charge compared to the consumption, and then that goes into a pool, which is then pulled from by energy efficiency, energy-efficient projects by commercial customers, be it school districts, Merck, TIVA, whatever, all commercial customers. So because the pool has not been exhausted year over year, PICO has been trying to petition the PUC to allow them to do more and more things to try and get that money exhausted and get it back into the hands of the people that are paying the fees. One of the best things that they've done this year, and actually, I benefited from it personally, because I went into Ace Hardware, and I saw a large display, LED bulbs supplied by PICO for 99 cents each, you know? This is what PICO is trying to do, they're trying to get people out to purchase things. Now, on the commercial side, we're able to go to a distributor and buy LED fixtures and bulbs at a rebate price, right off the shelf. We don't have to turn in any paperwork or anything like that. So right now, we're doing some research on a couple of our buildings to see what the cost would be to replace, let's say, our fluorescent tubes with LED tubes. See what the cost-benefit analysis is, see what the payback is. And the beauty of it is, this tube that's in these fixtures, they cost about $3 to purchase, then they cost $4.50 to recycle. We have to send them out. So we're looking at about a $7 tube, when the LEDs look like we might be able to get them on a rebate at $3 each.
The rebates coming from this Act 129, they don't expire? So this analysis that you're presently doing on lighting retrofits in these two buildings, you're not up against a deadline to get that in?
We're-
Because Act 29 is going to keep going?
Well, the, it has phases. So we're at Phase 3, which is going to expire in May, but they're looking at what's going to be the next phase. So the next phase isn't out yet, but they anticipate it to carry on, because there is this pool of money.
My point is, this is really good, so we don't want to miss-
Correct.
We don't want to miss this window of opportunity.
Correct, correct, yes, yes. So that's, we have one electrician that's actually been doing some surveying and some figuring out, and he's getting me some information. I just was speaking with him today, and some of the products that are coming out, and as far as LED replacements are pretty remarkable. Other items is adjusting summer operations to ensure efficient operations, and that's an ongoing thing, where we make sure that the buildings are air-conditioned, where the people are doing the custodial and cleaning, and then we make sure that they're controlled in the other areas where they might not be. Other operational efficiencies are, and I know it's not as neat as what Nick was talking about with technology, but in custodial supplies and cleaning processes, there are new technologies, and a lot of them. And we have convened a group of experienced custodians to review the current products and supplies, and we're calling in suppliers to show some of the new technology that's out there. So last year, Mr. Linsky purchased some technical, some floor scrubbing equipment for all the buildings, which was great. Now we're going to be looking at the next step. And we plan to make recommendations for the change of summer 2021. We're not going to be able to make this summer, because we have to analyze, and then evaluate, and then purchase, and we don't have enough time between now and the summer to do all that. Also, with the grounds and upkeep maintenance, we are convening the grounds group, because we're reviewing all the current supplies. We're trying to consolidate products and look at new equipment, techniques, some maintenance methods. There's a, there's a lot of, not as much technology out there, but there is some changes out there with field maintenance, and we're, we'll be making recommendations from the group, public to the February 2020 Facilities and Operations Meeting. We plan to give a presentation to that. And that completes the presentation for this evening. I can answer any questions, and we also have the line item detail. The facilities and operations budget is a lengthy one, because it's broken out per building, so it is pretty lengthy. If there's any questions, I could probably answer for you if you have any specific questions.
Mr. Schneider, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider.
All right. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I think we're back now to items recommended.
Because they were all over the place on this thing. Where are we at?
Items recommended for work session, action meeting.
There it is.
So I can move through these pretty quickly.
Okay.
We're on Item B. This is the 2021 Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Budget. This is an annual budget. It's called the Membership Services Budget. There's three parts to it. There's Office of Community and Government Relations, the Office of Professional Learning, and the Office of Technology Services. Attached in Board Docs, there's a summary explaining a little more detail what goes into each department. The bottom line for North Penn for the 2021 fiscal year is that we'll actually see a reduction. Yes, that's right, a reduction of $2,336, about a 1.10% reduction. Our share is based on enrollment for the one program and the wealth factor and weighted average daily membership for the other two. So even though the expenses for the member districts are staying the same, ours is going down because of our prorated share. And Mrs. Ramich, I know you're a, our board member that represents North Penn on the MCU Board. Anything to add to the MCU budget? I assume that the MCU Board is recommending each individual district to approve this budget?
Yes, they are. And this represents about 1% of the total budget for the MCU.
So we certainly like the fact that there's a reduction. We would need to have this placed on the February 20 action meeting for full board approval.
Do I have a motion? All in favor to move this to action?
Aye.
Motion? Passes.
All right, next item is the Montgomery County Tax Collection Committee, second alternate. The Montgomery County Tax Collection Committee is the organization that oversees the collection of the earned income tax, the EIT tax, in Montgomery County. And we have a primary representative, that's myself. Our first alternate is Mrs. Stoll, and now we're recommending that Kristin Johnson serve as the second alternate. So we would need, the actual resolution is attached in Board Docs, we'd like to place that on the February 20 action meeting as well.
Can I have a motion to move the action resolution to the action meeting? Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Yeah, congratulations.
Congratulations, yeah, well.
It's a wonderful honor. Meeting you'll probably never need to attend, but congratulations nonetheless. So next item, considering the hour and the fact that we've had three presentations, would you like to consider this item next Tuesday? This is the 2021 Real Estate Tax Rebate Program. We discussed this back in January, and we talked about some additional data regarding the supplements that the state provides. I gets into a little detail. I have a presentation that's there for your review. I'd be happy to postpone that till next Tuesday if you'd like.
Yeah, and I think also the lack of other committee members would probably be in our best interest to move that item. I have no problem with it personally.
That's what I was thinking. Great, okay, that moves us on to Item E. That's the Audit RFP. We do have a professional services policy that puts certain professional services on a schedule, that regardless of how happy we are with that particular provider, that once we hit that certain year, we go out and conduct an RFP. So last year was banking services, we conducted that RFP, and that led to a change to Univers Bank as our main depository. This year's scheduled calls for auditing services. It would be a five-year agreement, so we're ready to issue the RFP. We'd ask for placement on the February 20 action meeting, just to authorize this advertising for the RFP. We do have a number of samples, we'll finish those off in the next week or two and start soliciting proposals. Our current auditing firm, Mally, their contract had ended this year anyway, so it's perfect timing to conduct the RFP.
I have a motion to move this to action. A second. Motion by Mrs. Ramich, second by Mr. Casas. Sorry, I haven't been doing that tonight, have I? Just realized. Any questions? Comments? Okay, all in favor? Aye. So moved.
Okay, next time we have budget transfers. This is our monthly list. This is for January, totaling 1.352 million. Again, it's moving from one month, from one account to another. The line share of these deal with special education, and we are doing this based on guidance from PD with some account code changes. So all these are approved at action meetings. We recommend that these be placed on the February 20 action meeting.
Any questions? Motion to move the budget transfers to action. Mr. McBain, a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Resch. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, all the financial reports are listed under Section 6. I do have a summary for each report. On the general fund budget, I just want to mention that this fiscal year, we do have a $6.8 million budgeted deficit. We are projecting a $4.5 million positive variance, which means that halfway through the year, things are looking pretty good. That's within our 1% variance target. Our current projection would indicate that we would draw $2.3 million from our fund balance at the end of the year, certainly better than the $6.8 million budgeted amount. Our revenues are pretty tight when compared to the overall budget. They are less than previous years, but again, overall, we are projecting a positive variance in our budget. And if you have an opportunity, if you want to take a look at the other summaries, just a standard summary, I do want to mention that we do have two new reports that we included this month. We have the Crawford Stadium cost, so we'll track all the contract payments for the Crawford Stadium project. We do have that populated now, that spreadsheet with the bid awards that were made back in January. And then you would be able to itemize and see the expenses as they occur for professional services and contracted services each month. The same is true for NAP Elementary School. We do have a spreadsheet there now to track all the payments. Right now, we have the estimates in, we don't have the bid awards yet. We will be advertising for advertisement number one on Friday for NAP Elementary School, but we'll continue to track all of those expenses. We do have quite a few expenses so far for professional services and permitting fees and things like that, but we don't have any contractor expenses yet, but we'll continue to keep those updated. And at some point in the next couple of months, we'll remove Hatfield, and we will remove Montgomery from the monthly reporting. There's really been no activity, we just have a couple of small issues at both projects to wrap up, and once those final payments are made, those reports will be removed from the list.
Mr. Scrocky, just asking, because I might not remember till the next Facilities and Operations Committee. Thank you for that transparency for NAP and Crawford. Is that something we're going to cross-reference or have a type of dashboard through the current facilities page?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to confirm that. I have another question as well. The tracking the write-to-no request section, has that, has that been steady for the bandwidth that we've committed, or is that something that is rising?
Well, it is rising both in number and complexity. Probably more the complexity piece is the issue. We've had 35 requests so far since July, and it's really the complexity, especially the number of requests we've had so far this year for email documentation. That requires quite a bit of effort. That requires quite a bit of effort, culling through and reading every page of every email that might be potentially responsive to a particular request. I can think of the three that we've had this year, between myself and the solicitor, well over 25 labor hours spent just reading and redacting certain emails. So it's really that complexity part that's driving out additional staff time. Of course, that additional staff time is uncompensated from the requester. That's not part of the right-to-know regulation. There has been some discussion about proposed legislation to limit the right-to-know requests, perhaps levy a fee for commercial requests, which we receive quite a few of those. Organizations sometimes ask for our data and use that for marketing purposes, or to sell their own business product. We have organizations asking for every purchase order that we issue, every piece of vendor data that we have, every payment that was made. Of course, a lot of that exists electronically, but some of that requires manual manipulation of certain reports. So when we get into that level, that's certainly a lot more complex than, say, can you provide us a copy of the teacher's contract, which takes all of about two minutes to reply to. So it is concerning, it is mushrooming, and it's not just here at North Penn, it's throughout the IU, it's throughout the Commonwealth. We are all for transparency. There needs to be some limit, there needs to be a balance, though, because when it's taking up valuable staff time, when we have other projects to adhere to, and other timelines, it does become somewhat concerning.
Thank you for that update.
So we will postpone the rebate discussion until next Tuesday. We do have another finance meeting. If this wasn't enough fun, two hours tonight, we have another one next Tuesday night. Now, the good thing about next Tuesday night is we have a one-hour cap from 6:00 to 7:00. We have work session commencing at 7:00 PM. So we're going to have somewhat of a dilemma next Tuesday, because we have five presentations now, counting the tax rebate. We have special education, presenting department budget, we have curriculum, we have elementary education, we have secondary education, we have the rebate program. So quite frankly, we're not going to get all five in.
Yeah, maybe in advance, we want to think about some of those departmental presentations and moving them back.
And then we'll handle the rebate. So in terms of what has been approved then to move to work session tonight, we have the 2021 Extended School Care Tuition Rates and Summer Camp Rates. We have the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Member Services Budget. We have the Montgomery County Tax Collection Committee, second alternate. We have the Audit RFP, and we have budget transfers.
Thank you, Mr. Scrocky. All right, this is the second opportunity for the public to make a comment at this time. No? No, gentlemen? Okay. Any other business that members would like to bring up at this time? Seeing none? Have a motion to adjourn? All right, we adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.